Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As anyone who was here on Monday knows, the voting system was less than satisfactory, and John Souza would like to say a few words to allay any of your concerns, and perhaps mine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So on Monday night, as we all know, we experienced some problems with the voting system, and I want to thank everyone for your patience. I wanted to explain that our technology staff, consisting of Ted Luter and Matt Hall, have been working since Tuesday morning to try to improve the system's operation for tonight's meeting. Ted has been in communication with the vendor option technologies, and we're actually using a different computer tonight and running an earlier version of their software. The system was tested earlier today, and it was reported to be running much smoother. So keep our fingers crossed for this evening. I also want to mention a couple more things. When you operate your clicker, please be sure just to press the yes, no, or abstain button once. If you do it more than once, I know it can be frustrating, but it can sometimes overload the system. Also, there's a send button, but you do not need to use the send button. And also, if you see when you vote, and if you press the yes or the no or the abstain button, you should see a Y or an N or something display on the screen. If you see something display on the screen, and you look up front here at these large screens, and you don't see your vote recorded, Town Clerk Trisha Zoris spoke with the moderator and myself today about having a better system if you don't see your vote displayed on these large screens. Instead of coming up here to the stage, what we'd ask you to do is go to the check-in table where you entered the hall this evening, and there's a town clerk's employee named Pam, and Pam has a whole roster of all the town meeting reps, and she will be glad to record your vote manually. And that way, make it a little more order. If you do use your electronic voting device, and you don't see anything come up on the screen at all, then please see Ted over at this table here, and we'll try to see if the device is working, and maybe change the battery if it needs that. So thank you again for your patience. We will be evaluating the system over the summer months, and either looking to possibly upgrade or possibly replace the system, but we'll make a decision on that in the months ahead. So thank you.
Thank you. Indulge me for a second. Tonight is the last town meeting for an individual who has served on the Finance Committee and the School Committee, and has really been so generous with her time and talent, so I'd just like to acknowledge Kathy Duffett for our... And one other item of business. Before we commence, we have to vote on non-residents who will be permitted to speak if needed. And Kelly Linema is from NIMCOG. She is very knowledgeable about Article 27, 26, I'm sorry, no, 26, yes. And if you have any questions for her, she will be glad to explain anything that perhaps the presenter or anyone else is unable to answer. So just by hand vote, how many will permit her to speak if need be? Okay, thank you. Well, now we begin. Article 26. Oh, I'm sorry, time for a quorum count, because we've got to make sure that these machines are working, right? Normally, I see it on my screen, and it's not, so... One of the rare times when an IT guy gets an ovation, but well-deserved, Ted. Now, for some reason, it used to tell me that we have a quorum, but I just note that we do. So let's just proceed. Small technicalities. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So my name is Chris LaValle. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm here tonight to present Article 26, the MBTA zoning article. So today, you'll see presentation slides that are slightly different from the ones in the handouts and the ones that you have received via email from me. The ones on the screen have a little bit less detail, so it's easier to read. The ones handed out and emailed have more of the details, so you can follow along. So the state has designated 177 communities in scope of this law called MBTA communities. The communities with MBTA stations, either rail or bus, like Lowell and Belrika, are the MBTA stations, communities. MBTA-adjacent communities are the ones like Chelmsford that are adjacent to those other communities. So what is this law that Governor Baker signed into law require? Only zoning is required of this law, but actual building of the units, also known as housing production, is not required. It is a state law that we have to follow. We cannot opt out. If we do not follow, there are loss of current and future grant funding, state lawsuit...
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Sure. State lawsuit, which includes legal fees, and the state could also take over zoning of this area. So why is the state doing this? They really want to have more housing next to public transportation. We'll show you in a minute the missing middle in a couple of slides. But this law provides performance standards, not actual zoning, but performance standards that each MBTA and MBTA-adjacent municipality must write into their zoning bylaws. It's the same thing that the state has done with the 40B housing as a precedent. So what does this new law require us to do? It requires us to create zoning overlays, similar to the overlays that we already have in town, that follow the performance guidelines outlined by the state. It does not require actual building of the units. It's not state-controlled land. It doesn't have an eminent domain situation, so the state will not take over the land, and it's not going to be run by the MBTA. It's similar to other state laws that guide local zoning, and I've got some examples of that in the FAQs that I also sent out. While these multifamily units are permitted by right, no special permits, the projects will still be subject to zoning regulations, Planning Board site review, Board of Health, Water District, and Conservation reviews in those jurisdictions. And these are some of the example guidelines set forth in the MBTA overlays. So the Planning Board's strategy that we followed was to focus on the low end of the missing middle, and that includes as low as we can get in terms of density at 15 units per acre. The missing middle also includes higher up in the area of 30-plus units per acre, but our Planning Board was focused on the lower end to minimize impacts. And speaking of minimizing impacts, our strategy that we followed was to try and provide the best outcome for the town, given our current constraints. We wanted to minimize any negative impacts, decrease commercial impacts. We wanted to target the longest-term horizon possible with this, because our current infrastructure cannot take new development in the short term. So that was a factor. We wanted to select areas for this that would encourage, we did not want to select areas for this that would encourage development in the short term. We also wanted to take into account the UMass area that we recently worked with developers on, because that zoning overlay was already created with MBTA zoning in mind to allow us to use that for the zoning. The units in the site are under agreement and being currently built, so we wanted to leverage that. We also wanted to select areas that were already developed, because this decreases the likelihood of redevelopment and less impact to the town if there's more development. So the process that we followed was first, in June of 2023, we sought the assistance of NIMCOG to help guide us in the process, interpret state requirements. They've been a tremendous asset in helping us navigate the process, providing technical modeling services that provide us the data to use in our decisions. Kelly Linema, who's here tonight, is one of the two consultants that have been working with us throughout the process. So we understood the laws first. We brainstormed, discussed potential areas. We worked on the modeling of the areas, and we narrowed it down to a short list. And we wanted input from the public on these areas that we selected, and also ideas for areas that we hadn't thought of yet. So we had those three special sessions, on the UMass West session, a UPS session, because at that time, that site was under consideration, and then the 110 session. In October 2023, we did model additional areas that we did analyze, but we ultimately selected the two. We brought it before town committees, boards, departments. We gathered more information about the draft zoning, put that together. We modeled it after the current multifamily and the UMass West overlay, and then we drafted that new zoning. And since then, we've been doing outreach to town meeting reps, citizens, residents in the areas that we selected. So these are the districts that we reviewed. I'm not going to go through all of them in detail. You also have more information in your slides about them. But we looked at areas all across town with positives and negatives. We looked at open areas. We looked at more developed areas. And ultimately, we selected the two in front of you tonight, the UMass West area and the 110 area. So I want to go into a little bit more detail about each of the two areas we selected to give you some more information. So the UMass West area includes the old UMass campus, as well as the Windermere and Meadowwood Condo Association properties. We wanted to include the condo associations primarily because they have a really low chance of being developed, and I'll get more into that in a minute. So here's some information about those areas. The gross density that this is modeled after is 15 units per acre. The unit capacity with this area and the other area brings us to just over the 1,700 units that were required to model in our zoning. The 110 West multifamily area includes the areas of the Ledgewood, Woodcrest, and Foxhunt condominium associations. We also included the Enterprise Bank property in there, because we were looking for some additional area. And this is the unit capacity that we are modeling after, 477 units in this zone. So if you put all of that together, you will notice that the requirements of the MBTA zoning require us to zone only 50 acres to get the 1,477 units. However, when we do that, it comes out to almost 30 units per acre density, and we really did not want to model that for the town. So we increased the land area that we were looking at to 100 acres. That included modeling of 1,500, roughly 1,500 units, to give us roughly 15 units per acre as the modeled area. So in our zoning, we wanted to make sure that it fit the character of the neighborhoods. So we are also including in the zoning details about the architecture, just like we do with our current multifamily zoning, so that we don't get the boxiness of three-story buildings. We don't get the, we get a varied architecture. And these are some examples of things that are currently in multifamily areas at Glenbrook, Woodcrest, and Foxhunt. So some highlights of the overlay. Maximum density in each area is only 15 units per acre. We do limit the size of the building to three stories, up to 24 units per acre, so they're not gigantic buildings. No more than six dwelling units from a single entrance, and not more than 200 feet long. The zoning does allow for townhouse and medium multiplex style buildings, and we do, as I mentioned before, require varied architectural and non-uniformity across the buildings. We also included 25% of the total area to be recreational or open space, and we included bicycle storage in the zoning as well. All of this is currently in our multifamily zoning, so we wanted to model these overlays over what we already have. So this proposal was submitted to the state for pre-adoption review. And in March of, March 6th, we received an email from the state with results of their initial review. There are these four small issues and edits, mainly wording conflicts within the bylaw, clerical error on paperwork, that we did take care of and correct in our March 13th meeting, and the updated proposal has been included in the article. These minor issues were confirmed in the state's official letter to the town on March 18th. In that letter, they also conceptually agreed with our proposal for the bylaw and the maps. They also officially raised the minor issues that we had already addressed and had changed in the March 13th meeting. However, they also raised some significant concerns with the development agreement for the UMass West property. This development is between the town and the developer, and that was essentially the crux of their concern, is that they're looking at development agreements in these areas, because that is a way of the town getting around some of the zoning requirements. And some of the parts of the agreement were in direct conflict with the overlay district that we're proposing in the zoning. So the Planning Board has recommended to the Select Board, in which the Select Board has agreed to in their last meeting, to work with the developer to amend the development agreement, to remove the three restrictions in the fall timeframe. These are the three concerns of the state, and we believe that once these concerns are addressed, this will not be an issue anymore. Other concerns with the financial provisions that the state had in the agreement, we expect these to ultimately be determined to be consistent with normal by right zoning process. So we're not concerned with those areas at all either. So the Planning Board does believe that the development agreement, or the amending of the developer agreement, is very low risk, and I'll get to why. So the site at the UMass, the UMass site is very built out with the approved plans. They've already started foundations and site development work, and as such, there is no additional space on that site to locate the 77 additional units that would be required under the zoning. They would not have the space for the 77 units and the parking required without a complete redesign, because the project is fully financed, it's fully permitted, and actively under construction. Any changes to that design at this point would be significant delays in their process and cost. And these are just some of the costs and hurdles that they would have to overcome. So the specialized energy code, they would have to conform to as of July 1st. They would also have to refile with MEPA. They would have to go through a new review and approval from Conservation Commission and Planning Board Site Review. They would have to have a new review of the Chelmsford Water District to add capacity. And the biggest one is that they would have to add capacity to their wastewater treatment plant, which would require a complete redesign of that facility. Because it would be an additional capacity and redesign, they would also have to have a new review and approval from the DEP. So it's unlikely, highly unlikely, that that would happen. So the proposed timeline of next steps that we've proposed to the Select Board is after the town meeting vote tonight, if it passes, we would have 30 days to submit it to the Attorney State General for their usual 90-day review of bylaws. We would then expect approvals on the regulatory agreements that have been submitted in late March to lock in the choice affordable housing, as well as the age restriction in the units on the UMass campus. Then in September, we would get, hopefully, that decision from the state Attorney General on the zoning. And then, once we get that decision, the Select Board would enter into discussions and execution of the changes to the development agreement. And then we would submit all of that information to the state by the December 31st deadline. So the key takeaways. This is a state law. It's not opt-out. Noncompliance by December means a loss of current and future grant funding, likely a state lawsuit with legal fees associated with it, and the appointment of a special master from the state to take over zoning for this. They would likely want to put it in an area that could be built out. Also, the longer we wait to pass this, the more the plan, the more plans the state has a chance to review, and the more changes they may want to make. If we pass this now at this town meeting, we get it approved by the state, that means any changes would have to go through another bylaw change process. That would buy us some time to be able to come up with a plan. If we don't vote this in now and we wait till fall, that means that we would have to respond immediately by the December 31st deadline for any changes that the state wants to make. And while the state Supreme Court is likely to hear the case in October or the fall timeframe for Milton, the rulings do not come quickly and may only be known after our deadline, and that's a big gamble for us to take. In a CBS News article, the Suffolk Law Professor John "Infranca" says that the state has legal authority to compel communities to change their zoning rules. He backs the Attorney General's move to sue the town of Milton for noncompliance, and he says, I quote, "I think the Attorney General's lawsuit stands on very firm grounds. It's a power delegated by the state. It's a power that's exercised pursuant to the state police power." And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 26.
The Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 26.
Now, because Article 27 is the mirror opposite... Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Planning Board, where are you? Oh, I'm sorry.
The Planning Board unanimously recommends Article 26.
I don't know why I had to ask. I mean, it was obvious. But in any event, okay, so now we're going to be hearing from about Article 27, which is the mirror opposite. That presenter will have the same 20 minutes that was allotted for the Article 26. I will then ask the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and at that time, you will have opportunities to ask questions of either or both of the presenters and engage in discussion and also avail yourself of the knowledge and experience of Kelly Linema. All right, so the presenter of Article 27.
Hi, my name is Doreen Deschler, Precinct 9. I have been working on following, researching the MBT Communities Act for over two years now. So I guess I'll get started. Okay, the best option for the town of Chelmsford is to vote no on Article 26 and wait for the Supreme Justice Court's decision in October of 2024. Article 26 data presentation, key takeaways are, we must comply with the state law. No, we do not have to comply. The statute is not a confirmed law. It's in the courts right now. There is two cases going on, and they will be heard in October of 2024. This constitutes self-government rights, confiscates, it takes away our self-government rights, this statute as it is written, contrary to the Home Rule of Amendment on Article 89 of the State of Massachusetts Constitution. This is Supreme Judicial Court case of Home Rule Rights is the Supreme Judicial Court Docket Number 13580. It is on the docket. It is, you can look it up. It's there. The Mass application on the case on hold. Holden's case is on hold until the outcome of the Milton case. No city or town has approved the statute. There are some towns that have already voted no, such as Holden, who is on hold with the case until the Milton case. Milton, who has the case going on right now, who will be heard in October. Then there is Marshfield and Wakefield, who recently voted no. Littleton voted no, and then eventually, they negotiated with the state, and they got their amount of units that they have to build in their town down to 150 units. Rockport has 11 residents who filed a federal lawsuit to go against the town to stop the mandate. So now there's another lawsuit in the federal courts against this mandate. Next, you can scroll, yeah. Who is the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, NIMCOG? Who are they? They're not an independent contractor. They work for the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Office of the Housing Livable Communities, the Executive Office of Economic Development, the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Those are state agencies that this NIMCOG works for. They are not working for the town of Chelmsford, okay? And where are these people that are representing this NIMCOG? Where do they live? Do they live in Chelmsford? No, they do not live in Chelmsford. They live in Nashua and Brockton. Nashua is not like Chelmsford. Neither is Brockton like Chelmsford. So how do these representatives know what's good for the town of Chelmsford? Okay, so in Article 26, it says the two areas selected allow for compliance with the state law while minimizing the impact to Chelmsford. Well, a couple things. One, the state has, like they said, already kicked back a couple times, and who says they're not going to kick it back again? I do not believe that the state is telling us to zone an area that they don't plan, that they do not plan to build. they do not plan to build on. Why zone if you're not going to build? What's the purpose of zoning if you're not going to build? That makes no sense. None. And I can't believe anybody could believe that. If they're going to zone it, they're going to build it. Okay? Any potential lawsuits will fold into the Supreme Judicial Court case or will be placed on hold until the Supreme Judicial Court case is heard and decided. So us worrying about a court case, not, not valid, not a valid answer for going yes on this. Okay? Article 26 is written in conformance to the statute, not to Chelmsford, not to our town, not for us, but to the statute. The statute's financial impact costs not given by our proponents. Statue Opt-Out Clause not given by the proponents. Town receipt of state house founding for state housing projects not given to us, but I found out the state house funding up to the town has been $930,000 over six years. The Worcester Supreme Court, in the CMHA versus Holden, Holden agreeably correct in subsection B is an opt-out clause. That was the Superior Court in Worcester who said that there is an opt-out clause. Everybody's telling us there is no opt-out clause. Now, courts are the only ones that can interpret the law, and they interpret it as being, yes, there is an opt-out clause. Okay? With forfeiture of state housing funding, forfeiture delineated in subsection, subsection B. The statue opt-out clause costs $930,000 over six years, which no guarantee of getting that. There's no guarantee that we're going to get that 960, 30,000 again, or any money, for that matter. None of these grants are guaranteed. It's a, you might get it, you might not get it situation. The statute is a fundamental zoning change. Statue is not in the Chelmsford zoning code. Article 26 cannot conform to a non-existing zoning. Lawsuits against the MBTA communities filed in Essex Supreme, Superior Court in 2022. Residents representing advocacy groups from Hamilton, Wayland, and Wenham all filed motions to intervene called the MBTA Communities Act unconstitutional and illegally enforced. So there is another lawsuit going on in the courts against this mandate. The planning board's strategies could backfire. There are no guarantees. Zoning UMass West as MBTA zoning, developer could decide to build MBTA zoned as of right. Housing, no need for special permits, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. Increase the acre in scope for this zoning from 50 to 100. More land to build as of right. Again, no need for special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. Increasing the acreage does not guarantee decreased density. It just means they can build more. They got more land to build on. Amending development agreement is very low risk. This is what the plan, this is the Planning Board's word. Significant modifications to the plans will require enhanced energy stretch code applicable to permits after July 1st of 2024. Under MBTA zoning, zoning as of right, this is non-applicable. Other required, this was, this is written in the MBTA zoning requirements. Other requirements that do not apply uniformly in the multifamily zoning district. Zoning will not be deemed compliant with Section 3A's requirements that multifamily housing be allowed as of right if the zoning imposes requirements on multifamily housing that are not generally applicable to others. The following are examples of requirements that would be deemed to be inconsistent with as-of-right use. A requirement that multifamily housing meet higher energy efficiency standards. That's written in the MBTA, what the MBTA laws are, or standards, or guidelines, whatever you want to call them, the statute. Article 26, two areas select allow for compliance with the state law with the minimum impact of Chelmsford. Okay? The statute impact confiscates, this statute confiscates our Home Rule Amendment rights of self-government, which is our local matters, local matters from the Massachusetts Constitution. The statute, the statute's constitutionality validity is in serious question. It violates the Home Rule Amendment, Amendment Number 89 of the Massachusetts Constitution. The Supreme Judicial Court is to decide the statute validity. The statute is in limbo until the Supreme Judicial Court decision is decided. Due to the Supreme Judicial Court case, Attorney General cannot do anything against the town of Milton. Supreme Judicial Court case involves not just Milton. The Supreme Judicial Court case is statewide implications for all cities and towns. The statute effectively in limbo. Article 26 conforms to the statute. The statute fundamentally zoning change. It's a zoning change. Only town reps have authority to change or add new zoning. Not the state, town reps. No warrant article before the town reps. There was no article brought before the town reps to do this zoning change for MBTA zoning approval. It evades the town rep authority. Again, the two areas selected allow for compliance with the state with minimizing impact to the town. The state financial impact costs, no input from proponents. State hands over constitutional rights to those four state agencies. The states, the statute criteria per statute and agencies. The state agencies can change criteria at whim and have already reversed guidelines several times. The statute criteria, reasonable size, MBTA district. Agencies minimum 50 acres and 1,477 units. Minimum destiny, 15 units per acre. As of right, no special permit process. Suitable for families with children. No age restriction. Within a half mile of a train or bus station ferry terminal. 1,477 units, MBTA separate, 1,477 units, 40B. Equals 10% housing of MBTA plus 40B equals 20% more housing. Total units responsible for ours, 2,954. No overlap. Minimum number of children and cost per child. 50 acres times 15 units per acre plus one child per unit equals 750 children. Cost to educate one child in Chelmsford is $20,000 a year. Town opt-out cost, 10% opt-out budget is 16, our operation budget is 16 million a year. That's the operation budget for the town, 16 million a year. So combined with 16 million a year with no kids, 31 million a year with kids, that's the cost, that it's going to cost the town if we pass this amendment, our mandate. It's going to cost the town 16 million a year if there are no kids, but we know there are going to be kids because it's going to be built for families with children. So there will be 16 million or 31 million a year, which will more be 31 million to 46 million because of the children. The statute requires our rights and 16 million or 31 million a year. Areas selected are already built out or in process of being built. This is what the Planning Board is telling us. Law prohibit probability of being redeveloped condo association, high cost, the lower rate of returns on net new units. If development occurs, and new units would be 787, total of 521, UMass West 266 on Route 110. New MBTA zoning is based on current multifamily and UMass West multifamily overlay district zoning, currently including 10% affordable housing requirement. State feasibly studied being commissioned for us to increase requirements to 15%. Okay? But, the minimum number of units per statue is 1,477 units for the MBTA full rate. Article 26 is 787 total MBTA units, still short 690 units. This means more MBTA districts to meet state agency guideline. Focus has to be on impact of the statute. This is not a one-shot situation. Article 26 conforms to the new MBTA zoning. MBTA zoning is state-driven only. Statue contrary with Home Rule Amendment. MBTA zoning does not exist in the town code. MBTA zoning is fundamental zoning change. New MBTA zoning requires approval. Only town reps have authority to add or change the zoning. Has not occurred for the statute. Evades authority of town reps. No warrant article to town reps for approval of the MBTA zoning. In of itself as fundamental change to add to town zoning code. Article 26 cannot confirm to MBTA zoning because it does not exist in town code. MBTA zoning must be approved first. Maximum affordable units is 10% per agency, 10%. They will not go for 15% because the maximum for MBTA affordability is 10%. And that's if the developer agrees. The developer does not have to agree because there is no mandatory affordability in the MBTA zoning. The two areas selected allow for compliance with the state, again, with the minimum impact. New MBTA zoning is based on the current multifamily, UMass West, and the multifamily overlay district zonings. The state is prohibited from evading or maligning or changing the constitutions because it does not have the authority. Only the courts have authority to determine constitution of validity. The Home Rule Amendment, established in 1966, Article 89 of the Massachusetts Constitution, guarantees the right of local self-government. It is the intention of this article to reaffirm the customary and traditional liberties of the people with respect to the conduct of their local government and to grant and confirm to the people of every city and town the right of self-government in local matters. Subject to the provisions of this article and to such standards and requirements as to the general court, court, not Attorney General, not Governor, court, may establish law in accordance with this article. The two areas, again, selected, less, okay. The definition of zoning reflects the Home Rule Amendment local right. Zoning, ordinance is and bylaws adopted by cities and towns to regulate the use of land, buildings, and structures to the full extent of the independent constitutional powers of the cities and towns to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of their present and future inhabitants. That's in the MGLC 40A zoning, Section 1A definitions of zoning. The Chelmsford Home Rule Charter, Town Constitution, reflects the Home Rule Amendment right of self-government. It defines the town as the people of the town, the local government. Powers of town under the charter shall be construed interpreted liberally in the favor of the town. That's in Part 1 incorporation and authority. Article 26 does not conform to being in favor of the town. Article 26 presentation background. In 2021, Governor Baker signed the Amendment in Zoning Act, which is intended to address the state's severe housing shortages by promoting the production of multifamily housing within the 177 MBTA, MBTA-adjacent communities. The new law, and the MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. Article 27, MBTA zoning statute in reverse. We've got Section 3A, which I will read out, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable, oh, this is 3AC. This is the stat, the part of the section that gives the zoning rights to those four different state agencies. And then there's Section 3AB. This is the opt-out clause. Says, "Communities that fails to comply with this section shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative as described by the Governor in the message to the General Court dated December 11th, 2017. The local capital projects funds established in Section 2EE of Chapter 29. The Mass Works Infrastructure Program established in Section 63 of Chapter 23A. Or the Housing Works Infrastructure Program established in Section 27 of Chapter 23B." That is the law. That is the only thing that they can do. They can only take those funds away from us. They can't do any additional funds. They can't do the lawsuit. They can't come into our town and say, oh, I'm going to just take this land, we're just going to zone it where we want to zone it.
Your time has expired. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Because the Finance Committee unanimously recommended Article 26, they took no action on 27.
Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously opposed recommending approval of Article 27.
All right, time for questions and discussion. We have two proponents here that you can ask for either or both, and we also have the NIMCO rec, if you feel that's appropriate.
You can start the clock if you want.
Hold on. Speak into the mic, George.
You can start the clock. George LaRue's Precinct 2. Point of clarification. I served 17 years on Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. And Northern Middlesex Council of Governments represents our community. They are a consultant, and they are, they represent nine communities. And Chelmsford's one of them, Lowell, Tucksbury, Drakeett, Tingsborough, Dunstable, Pepperell. I'm sure I'm missing one, but it's served by a board of directors. And Chelmsford has two representatives plus an alternate, as well as the other communities. So to say that Northern Middlesex Council of Governments has nothing to do with our community, they just, they just blow in, that's not true. They are part of our community. They serve our community. I served the two master plans, and they were our consultant on that. So they do what is directed by the Planning Board, or the Board of Selectmen, or the manager, whatever they went for proposals. I'm going to vote for this. When it first came out, I was worried about it because I'm on the butter, touring the butter to the West Campus. And I was concerned about the number of units, and I kind of ran the numbers, and it wasn't much different. But if you go by the West Campus now, foundations are in, elevator shafts are up. The others are them changing that proposal. The Planning Board is, I think, correct that they would really have to jump through some hoops to change that proposal. So I'm voting for this article.
Paul Regazio, Precinct 2. I attended the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. George, there are two articles you said you were going to vote for. Which one are you voting for?
My apologies. I am voting for the zoning.
Okay. 26.
Again, Paul Regazio, Precinct 2. I attended the pre-meeting last week, and I asked a question that I never got fully an answer. I requested whether or not an amendment could be made to Article 26 in which stated that if the, if the vote, or if the, if the, if the MBTA law is voided by subsequent actions of the court, then that, then this, then our precinct, our warrant article would become null and void. And I did not get a definite, a definitive answer on that, and I would like to request from this, from the, from our town council. But I have, before he answers that, I would like to...
Well, why don't, why don't we do one question at a time?
Well, both of them are somewhat related, okay? And again, I asked when, when the town council talks, just give his comments regarding the validity of the state law. Is that state law, you know, real? Will it be voided? And also, are the penalties that are related with it, are those, are those lawful and legal?
Okay. Nice job.
Mr. Moderator threw you to the previous...
I think, Ken, what I'm saying is, most of us here at the town...
Paul! Paul, 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 let him answer the questions.
I just wanna make a, just a pre-comment, okay?
No, no, no. Then you're in discussion. I don't want you to...
No, I'm not discussing. Just let me make one sentence, okay? Most of us here are not lawyers, and so I would like to hear from our lawyer.
Right. He wants to answer your question. Just let him do it.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. I will tackle the first question first. I know that I have had this conversation with the previous speaker prior to-town meeting. And my response then is gonna be the same as it's going to be now, which is I don't have a definitive answer. I am not aware of the Attorney General's Office ever approving a zoning bylaw that has basically an opt-out provision if there is a subsequent legal action. I think that realistically, given the level of scrutiny that the Attorney General's Office is placing on the MBTA community's zoning provisions in all of the municipalities in which it's applicable, my guess would be that they would not look favorably upon providing an opt-out provision. But I can't answer definitively one way or another. With regards to the question on the legality of the statute, that's a pretty in-depth question. What I can tell you is I have reviewed the litigation that was filed by the Attorney General's Office. I have reviewed the proposed counterclaim that has been filed by the Town of Milton. And the only thing in either one of those that would even remotely address the legality of the statute itself is a provision in the counterclaim from the Town of Milton that argues that the statute violates Section 30 of the Declaration of Rights of Massachusetts. And that has to do with the legislature acting as both legislature and judicial branch, or legislature and executive branch, or the executive branch acting as executive branch and legislative branch. It's pretty arcane. I don't think that that's going to be, there's even a reasonable likelihood that that claim is going to prevail. And again, that claim is a pending counterclaim. It has not yet been allowed to even be, to move forward. Other than that, there's nothing in any of the litigation that goes to the question as to whether or not the legislature had the authority to pass this legislation as it relates to home rule. I would note that the provision of Article 2, Section 1, right of local self-government, it states it's the intention of this article to reaffirm the customary and traditional liberties of the people with respect to the conduct of their local government and to grant and confirm to the people of every city and town the right of self-government in local matters, subject to the provisions of this article and to such standards and requirements as the General Court may establish by law in accordance with the provisions of this article. The General Court is the Massachusetts Legislature. It has been called the General Court for literally centuries. We are now in the 193rd session of the General Court. And the two members of the state legislature that were here Monday night, Representatives Cataldo and Elliott, are members of the General Court. So, the claim that it's a violation of the Home Rule Amendment because the legislature has passed legislation limiting the ability of a municipality to zone is not accurate.
And what about the penalties? Is the penalties that are part of those?
So, there are a number of penalties. I can certainly run through exactly what it is that the Attorney General is looking for in terms of their prayers for relief. They are looking for a declaration that Section 3A obligates a town to have a district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. They are looking for a declaration that the Attorney General's Office is entitled to injunctive remedies to ensure compliance. They are looking for an injunction requiring the town to create a compliant zoning district. They are looking for an injunction to prevent the building commissioner from enforcing town bylaws that are inconsistent with the MBTA community's requirements. And if those provisions aren't complied with, they are looking for the SJC, which is the Supreme Judicial Court, to appoint a special master so that that special master can then propose a compliant zoning bylaw. So, the relief that the Attorney General's Office is looking for is pretty extreme and would certainly create a hardship on the town if they were to impose it. And that also goes above and beyond the remedies that are listed in the statute, which have to do with the loss of state funding.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Doug Bruce, Precinct 11. If you'd start the clock, please. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a planner. I'm just a guy, a town meeting rep with common sense, trying to sort through all this. And I think we're all kind of in that same boat. First off, I want to thank the Planning Board for doing so much work over the last year-plus with this. I don't think anybody likes the MBTA requirement, the zoning law, or anything like that. The least of which, me. I don't like it. I think it's state overreach. However, I'll tell you right up front, I urge you to vote yes on 26, no on 27. And here's why. I'd like to appeal to the emotional side. Everybody in this room, not everybody, but most people in this room have raised families. We've raised, we have children, we have grandchildren, who have gone to Chelmsford Schools or Neshoba Tech. Every year, we graduate 400 students, plus or minus, from our high schools. Those young adults need a place to go live. Where are your children going to live? Where are your grandchildren living? Are they going out to Western Mass? Are they in Central Mass? Are they out in Worcester, in Past Worcester? Or are they even leaving the state? They're going to New Hampshire? They're going to South Carolina or whatnot? We have a housing crisis, and we need to do something about it. And I appreciate the reticence of local communities to create zoning, to create more housing. However, I don't want to have to jump on a plane to fly and visit my kids or my grandkids in South Carolina, or Florida, or Arizona, or whatnot. I'd like for them, they had a great life growing up here in Chelmsford. I'd like them to be here locally with us. So, I'd like to see us do something to create housing for our future generations. Now, that said, this law is onerous. And do we want to be the nail that's sticking up, that the state's gonna hammer down, right? Do we want to join these other lawsuits, the Miltons and the other towns, and incur the expense that that's gonna cost? I don't think we want to be there. I think the Planning Board has done a great job to try and find a middle ground on this. So, I believe we can vote yes on 26, no on 27, and try and ride out the wave. If things change with future court cases or whatnot, so be it. But I urge everybody to vote yes on 26, no on 27. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for a point of interest, we're only taking one vote. Whichever way you vote on 26 is gonna be the opposite of the way your vote is considered on 27. So, if you vote yes on 26, it's gonna be a no vote on 27. We're not taking two votes. Because you wouldn't vote on yes on one and yes on the other. It just doesn't make any sense, okay? So, I just, you know, don't worry about two votes. We're only taking one.
David Rand, 167 Dunstable Road.
Hold on, hold on. What is your question, ma'am?
Yeah, he's talking about having housing for us.
Oh, no, no. You can't argue. You can't, you have to get in line if you're gonna argue. If you have a question, or answering a question, that's fine. Go ahead. Sorry, sir.
Precinct 1. I have a question for the Planning Board. The, was there a new source of water discovered in this area that we're gonna be able to access? Water is now, during drought season, we have, they ban all outside watering and the stuff. And they did it for a month in the center, and they did it for, you know, off and on in North Chelmsford. I just see voting for, Article 26 is voting for no outside watering.
So, to clarify, Article 26 only creates zoning. It does not create more building and development. Zoning can incentivize development. However, the strategy that the Planning Board took for this particular overlay is a strategy where we picked areas that are unlikely to be developed. And that was the strategy for complying with the law without overburdening the town. Now, I also have to say that during the process of this discussion in the Planning Board, we did identify things that we did like about this zoning and areas that we do want to potentially, down the road, when our infrastructure can handle it, encourage development. For example, in the Radisson area, the 110 area, there was some discussion about it would be nice to have zoning there where we could have the first level be commercial and then some affordable housing above it. We cannot do that through this MBTA zoning. We don't have the control in order to be able to do that.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Sounds like debate, and he told the other one that she couldn't speak. He asked a question about...
Well, no, he's asking about water, and I'm waiting for him to get to it.
So, when we do have the infrastructure to be able to sustain development, the Planning Board is going to be looking at areas that we want to encourage development when our infrastructure can handle it. But the strategy we took now is because our water system, our sewer system, and our school system are at capacity, we decided to take this strategy for the overlay and not encourage the development right now under this zoning.
The cost of housing is soaring right now. So, there's all kinds of incentives for these builders to do whatever necessary, to build more. I don't think it's gonna work.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, is this the question and answer period here, as opposed to debate? What are we doing?
We always do question and answer and debate at the same time.
Oh, thank you. So, I do have some questions. To the, through you to the Town Council. Just to be absolutely clear, the statement was made earlier that this requirement for the MBTA zoning is not a law because it's being challenged in court. I understand that the legal system to work differently than that. So, is this, or is this not a law?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Nothing in the litigation that has been filed would stay the application of the MBTA zoning statute. It remains in place and is moving forward as approved.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that statement that was made by the supporter of Article 27 was incorrect. It appears to be so. Thank you. Also, the statement was also made that because of this zoning change, there will have to be built additional units. Anyone can answer that one if that's not correct.
I can take that. So, while overlay zoning can encourage additional building, where we have located these overlays, or where we're proposing to locate these overlays, actually does not encourage building. The primary reason is because the UMass property itself is currently built out, if they build it to the current plans. And beyond that, for the condo associations, a builder would have to purchase, well, the builder would have to purchase every single unit at market rate, encourage the condo association to dissolve, purchase those units, tear down the units, and then build up according to the overlay zoning. The Planning Board members have calculated that out, and they would lose, I think, upwards of $70 million per area.
Okay. One more question through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
More answer? Yes?
Yeah.
Hold on. Are you directing a question to this?
I said...
I get to answer the question too, don't I?
So, this, she's going to, I guess, answer the question differently?
Okay. If you're fine with me?
Yeah, I am gonna answer it differently. According to MBTA rules, and the MBTA, if you read the three paragraphs of the MBTA statute, which is that is the rule, that was signed into legislation, they can build as of right, which as of right means that they don't need a special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. So, they don't need all that stuff.
I understood that.
Okay. So, they can build when they want, where they want to build, how they want to build.
My question was, the statement was made that they must be...
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Desler.
Can I finish?
No, no, no. Hold on. He's already acknowledged that he's satisfied with your response. So, until he asks you another question, or anybody else, there's no reason for argument.
My question was, do you, must units be built? Must is a special word. That units have to go in, and that's what I wanted to clear up, that that was not the case.
Right. No, it is the case. Because they're saying that you need to have 15 units per acre. So, those units have to be built in order to comply with the statute.
Okay. So, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Council. Do you read the law as it currently exists, that if we pass this overlay unit, the additional units must be built?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. No. The statute requires that the town zone to allow for as-of-right construction of up to 15 units per acre. It does not require that that's construction actually occur.
Okay. So, it's just a zoning change. Thank you. That's a very important point, so I just appreciate that. And the last question that I have is, should perchance the courts decide that this zoning is unconstitutional, does that expunge the overlay zoning change? Or must we come back here and remove it? And can we do that?
Is that question to me also?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. It would not automatically expunge the passing of the zoning article. It would require the town meeting to come back and affirmatively repeal that zoning amendment.
So, that would be the same process we're going through now? If we wish to pass this change, we'd just come back and remove it?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. If you could start the clock, please.
Yeah, it's hard for me to hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I can't hear you.
Oh. I'm sorry. I forgot to remove my mask. Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. And if you could start the clock, please. Hi. A few things. As far as the SJC case with Milton, there is an intervener defendant by a citizen from Rockport who is challenging the constitutionality of the statute. And I know that because I talked to his lawyer. And so, that is now being encompassed within the SJC case. A few other things I'd like to make clear. If, big if, we wanted to do the MBTA zoning statute, Section 3B is an opt-out clause. That means you don't have to do any zoning at all. You don't have to follow the state guidelines at all. But, what that does mean is that we would forfeit state funding for state housing projects. The money that the town has received for those particular projects is $930,000 over a secure period, which is an average of $155,000 per year. Now, that's not guaranteed because it's, all of these are competitive. So, you can't depend on it. However, what is the opposite to that? If we did implement this, we would need additional education costs. Even at one child per half of the required units, you're looking at $15 million per year. So...
One minute.
So, this does, even just at that, it makes no sense to exchange $15 million per year, not even counting town operations, which is more, for a non-guarantee of $930,000, maybe, over multiple years. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that Boston is exempt from this statute. This is where the center of the MBTA option network is. Boston has 20% empty commercial office building space, which is 31.8 million square feet. So, if the state really thinks this is a housing crisis, which is, it is not because the recent reports show people are leaving the state in droves. The question is pricing, not quantity.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, vote no on 26, thank you.
Joel Luna, 10 Carter Drive, Precinct 10, and also associate member of the Planning Board, which means I get to have all the fun but none of the responsibility. I have, I have three questions. First one's for Town Council. We've heard now about an opt-out clause. Is there an opt-out clause associated with this law?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. No, there is no opt-out clause. That actually is one of the questions that is being litigated in the Milton litigation. It was addressed in the Holden decision. However, the Superior Court decision in the Holden matter noted that arguably the defendants in that matter were correct that there is a statutory remedy, but then they noted that the Attorney General's Office has specifically stated that there is no opt-out provision. So that comment was cited approvingly in the Superior Court decision. The Superior Court decision, under no way, shape, or form, indicates that there is in fact an opt-out clause. It's the exact opposite.
All right, thank you. Second question is for the Financial Director, and that is, what would we lose? Can you give us an estimate of how much current funding that we are getting? How much would we lose? And also, what other kinds of financial risks are we exposing ourselves to by voting no?
Mr. Moderator, to answer the previous speaker's question, in researching this with our Community Development Director Evan Bolansky, under the Mass Works Program the Town of Chelmsford received, has received $1,484,000 over multiple years. In 2011, we received $475,000. In 2018, we received $329,000. And in 2022, we received $680,000. Most of those, most of those grants were for public works-type projects or for, for example, our signalization improvements at roadway intersections. Under the Housing Choice Grant Program, we were awarded $250,000 in 2022 for a project in North Chelmsford at Princeton Street. So that, the total grants that we've received over those years is $1,734,000.
All right, thank you. Did you want to make any comment about any other potential financial risks to the town in terms of legal costs and so forth and so on? It could be speculative, I understand that.
The reason I identify those is those are primarily the grants that were discussed in the MBTA, you know, in the MBTA legislation. Certainly, we do receive other, you know, a portion of our budget, although the state has not said they would penalize cities and towns that I'm aware of and their state aid. I would point out, we do receive funding from the state. Our state aid is about $21.4 million, supports our, the budget that representatives just adopted on Monday night, that's about just over 13% of our budget. But I do want to say that's, the state so far has not brought that up with communities, but that's why I just discuss the grant programs.
All right, thank you very much. And the last question is for the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and that, since the, this is the lead-in to the question, and that is that, since it may be perceived that the actions of the Planning Board are actually to go to where it's very unlikely for housing to be developed, would you comment? You already commented a little bit on this earlier, but if you could directly comment again, what was the Planning Board's, does that mean that the Planning Board does not have interest in creating housing in Chelmsford?
That is correct. We do want to reasonably and responsibly create more housing in Chelmsford. We feel that with additional overlays and looking at the zoning conflicts in town under our control, that would be a more reasonable and responsible way to encourage housing where appropriate and when appropriate in Chelmsford.
All right, thank you. And you can start the clock for comment. In general, it may, may or may not surprise you that the Planning Board also does not like this law. We also feel a bit, it's a bit overreach on the part of the state, but we also recognize that there are two ways that you can respond to this, and it's really a question of assessing the risk of those responses. To vote no on this essentially to reject the law and to expose ourselves to potential risks that we don't even know about yet in terms of particularly financial risks, where on Monday we saw how much our budget depends on state money and how we would be viewed by the state if we were to be seen as opposing the state's intentions in this case. But also because the path that the Planning Board has laid out is very low-risk in terms of where it's being situated, and I think that any reasonable-thinking person would recognize that it is better to vote yes and take the least-risk path where you have the greatest certainty of the outcome than another path where there's much larger risk and greater uncertainty about what the outcomes will be. So I recommend you vote yes on 26, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deschler.
Yes.
You cut the line.
No, I didn't, he held my spot.
Point of order. Are we allowed to pull?
No, no, you can't hold, the people have to queue up just like everybody else.
She has to be able to respond.
No, no, we don't do that. At the very beginning of every town meeting, I say if a proponent wants to engage in debate, they have to queue up like everybody else. You can't, unless you want to say something, sir, you can't basically say, "I'm giving up my spot to her."
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, she was queued up, she's participating up front as well, and she is a presenter.
No, no, Mr. Latina, Mr. Latina, I've made a decision on this. If Ms. Deschler wants to talk, and she's certainly welcome to, I'm not going to let her preempt everybody else who's waiting in line.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, being very aggressive to one side of this.
No, I'm being.
May I just make one comment, that this is unique in that we have two presenters, one queue.
No, no, we've always had the presenters, we've always had the presenters queue up in line just like everyone else and they have to wait their turn. If somebody else asks a question of Ms. Deschler, which when she went over here, nobody had a question for her, then I would, I would not, I would have a different attitude towards it, okay? So I'm trying to be fair to both sides.
Mr. Moderator, could I ask a quick question?
Yes. Well, was this your spot in line?
No, just a point of order question.
Oh, point of order? Go ahead.
Yes, sorry, point of order question. Can town meeting representatives vote right now to allow Ms. Doreen to take a spot?
No, no, they have to queue up just like everyone else. The proponents are no different than anyone else. If Paul Cohen was, and he has been, and when he wants to line up, he has to get to the back of the line. Go ahead.
I guess it's me. Nancy Arroway, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I have a few questions for clarification to Town Council.
Can you, can you move the microphone down a little bit closer to you?
Is that better?
Much.
Okay, we'll give that a try. The first question is, what is a home rule initiative?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I think you mean, what is the home rule amendment?
Yeah, what's, what's a home rule regulation within the state laws?
So I read from, I read the home rule amendment just a little bit ago. Basically what it is, is it affirms the ability of a municipality to control certain issues within its own borders. And so zoning has traditionally been a matter in which the state gives a great deal of leeway to municipalities to handle on their own, but it also imposes a number of restrictions on municipalities in terms of what it can and cannot do. Chapter 40B being, I think, the most obvious example, but there's also numerous provisions in Chapter 40A that limit the ability of a municipality to zone, including 40A Section 3, which literally states items that may not be subject to zoning.
So I know that we've, we've come here and adopted state regulations into the town that were optional. Is that what a home rule is, or is that something entirely different?
That's something entirely different. So I think you may be thinking of like the Building Stretch Code. So that's a provision in which the state allows a municipality to adopt building code provisions that are more stringent than the general building code, and then they essentially become part of the state building code for that municipality. It's a different type of.
Pass those because the state says that we're allowed to, they give us permission?
Correct. There are also home rule petitions that go directly to the state legislature, in which a town is seeking the authority to do something that doesn't otherwise have the authority to do.
So is all of the Mass General laws under the home rule options?
No.
Okay. Is the MBTA zoning requirement under the home rule options?
So to be clear, the MBTA zoning statute, which is in Chapter 40A, Section 3A, is not a home rule petition.
Is it a mandatory law then?
Yes.
Okay.
It is absolutely mandatory.
Okay, so it is state law, it's Mass General laws, state law.
Yeah, Chapter 40A, Section 3A.
Question for you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
You said that we can vote yes on 26, and if we don't vote yes on 26, it is a yes vote for 27. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
A no on 26 is the equivalent of a yes on 27.
And an abstain on 26 likewise is a yes on 27, because it's not a yes.
An abst, an abst, an abstention?
If someone abstained on 26, that's effectively a vote for 27, because it's not.
No, it's an abstention on both.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
So, Mr. Moderator, again, through you to the previous speaker. I think that the way Article 27 has to be viewed is that if you read that Citizen Petition Warrant article, it is requesting town meeting members to vote a certain way on Article 26. So ultimately, whatever you vote on Article 26 is what you vote on Article 26, Article 27 becomes moot. The idea here was to allow that citizen the ability to make a presentation to this body prior to them voting on Article 26. So they've had that opportunity, and once Article 26 is acted upon, Article 27 becomes moot.
Okay, start the clock. So as far as I can see, there's only two reasons not to vote yes on 26. One, you don't believe that the Planning Board did an adequate job of evaluating where to put this, and you want to send it back to committee so that they can choose some, one of the other sites or some of the other sites that they had their, under evaluation. And the second reason is because you just plain don't want to meet the state law. I can't see any other reason not to vote yes. So when we started this meeting on Monday night, the first thing that we did was all of the newly-elected town meeting representatives took an oath of office. And part of that oath of office was a commitment, a personal pledge, that as we do our jobs here, we would meet town, state, and federal laws. So I'm going to stand up here, guys, and make the argument that if you don't vote yes on 26, because you really refuse to adopt state law, you are not keeping your oath of office pledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make one comment, because I know that people are thinking I'm being unfair to the proponent on the other, on Article 27. I don't want a situation where one proponent on either side has people who support that position standing in line with no intention of speaking so that this person can go back and say, "I'm holding the spot for whichever proponent it is." That's not the way we operate, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Thorin.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct 7. I asked questions the last time I was here, now you can start the clock. Yeah, I've been at town meeting for over 34 years now, and one thing I can say about the Chelmsford Town Meeting is we have a lot of smart people in the room. And I'm going to vote in favor of Article 26, and I want to tell you why. I hate state mandates. I hate state mandates, especially when they're unfunded state mandates. You know, where are we going to get the additional water? Where are we going to do, put the additional students? If we go to a new area of town and put in 1,500 units on an area that's wide open and buildable, what's that going to result in? Nothing good. It'll give us housing, but it'll also give us a lot more expenses in town. Now, what the Planning Board has done, and I've been to all their meetings, is they thought about this, as you saw from the timeline, extremely carefully. They looked at the town and said, "We have areas in the town that can be rezoned but are very unlikely to be built upon." The UMass facilities are going in, they will be there. We've already accounted for the population that will take place in those facilities. The facilities on Route 110, which is near me, are already built up, they're fully occupied, they have students. We've accounted for that. So we have a state mandate that's forcing us to do something that doesn't require us to build a single unit at this point in time. Now, is a builder going to come down and tear down all those buildings on 110? I doubt it. Is a builder going to come in and redesign all those units at the UMass campus site? No, because they have a builder there who's already laying foundations and has the entire facility planned out. They do have to make some adjustments with the agreement on the town. But what the Planning Board has done is designed a solution to a vexing problem of a state mandate that has the least impact on Chelmsford now. Now, if we desire to have additional housing of any type, you know?
One minute.
Yes, I want that time back, but anyway. So if we have two places where essentially are built out or going to be built out, it has a minimum impact on Chelmsford, and when we want to add new housing of any type, and the Planning Board and others will decide on this, it'll be a place of our choosing, not because the state says you got six months to figure out how to do it to support an MBTA mandate. So I urge all of you to vote for this because the Planning Board has put the amount of time into it, the due diligence, and come up with a solution that has the lowest impact on Chelmsford, schools, water, sewage, and everything else, and then we need to build new housing, we'll decide where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Patel, Precinct 6. So through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council. So I'm just wondering, what are the nature of the claims for the lawsuits in Milton and Holden, and if there are other ones, if you do know what they are? Because you mentioned that they didn't challenge the authority of the statute. So if they're not challenging the authority of the statute, what is the nature of the claims, if you do know?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I believe I've already covered the claims that were raised by the Attorney General's Office in the Milton suit, and again, that was seeking to, a declaration that Section 3A obligates a town to have a district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as-of-right, seeking a declaration that the Attorney General's Office is entitled to injunctive remedies to enforce compliance with Section 3A. They're asking for an injunction to enter requiring the town to create a compliant zoning district. They're looking for injunction to prevent the Building Commissioner from enforcing any town bylaw that is contrary to the MBTA zoning requirements, and then ultimately looking for the appointment of a special master to propose a compliant zoning bylaw if the town refuses to do so. The Town of Milton is looking for a declaration that Section 3A is not self-executing. They are looking for a declaration that the Attorney General's injunctive relief that they're requesting is not available. They're seeking a declaration that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Community Guidelines are invalid and unenforceable. And that just goes to the guidelines that were adopted by the state agency, it does not go to the statute itself. And then they're seeking a declaration that Section 3A violates Article 30 of the Declaration of Rights, which I again covered earlier, has to do with either the legislature or the executive branch or the judicial branch acting. or the executive branch, or the judicial branch acting outside of the jurisdiction of their respective branches. The holding litigation was filed by an affordable housing group, and they were seeking to require the town of Holden to comply with the, sort of the preliminary filing requirements under the MBTA Zoning Communities Act. Superior Court made a determination that those litigants did not have standing to bring their challenge, so that appeal was dismissed. That is currently on appeal, and that appeal has been stayed at the appeals court.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just one other point with regards to the intervenor in the Milton matter. That's just, it's a proposed intervenor. They have not yet been granted status as an intervenor, so any claims that they have raised are not part of that procedure yet.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was at least in town meeting and on the record, and people could hear it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ryan Latina, Precinct 9. I have some questions, I guess, to the presenter that's there. When was this legislation actually passed by the state legislature, and when was it signed by the governor?
It was signed by the governor in 2021, and it was passed, Town Council may know, but sometime before that.
I'm sorry?
I don't know exactly when.
2021.
2021. January 7th of 2021, is that? I'm using other papers. The warrant article's not even up here. I'm not sure what I'm voting on, but...
I don't know when exactly it was signed, but sometime in January 2021.
Okay. And what did the MMA say about, to the Republican governor that was signing this in January of 2021? Did you look at that? MMA is something the Select Board always looks to...
I am not sure. You probably do, since you're asking the question.
Mr. Latina, are you asking a question which you know the answer to?
I'm asking a question.
I do not know.
I wanted to know if the proponent knows the basic information. And can you give me some guidance on, are these locations that we've chosen, the Planning Board expertise with NIMCOG have chosen, are they within a half mile of an MBTA station?
No. They don't need to be. We're an adjacent community. There are no MBTA stations in adjacent communities.
And that's in the law? Could I ask out of the town attorney? The law says that adjacent community does not need to be within a half mile of a station.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. That is correct, for the most part. MBTA adjacent communities do not have MBTA bus stops or subway stations or anything of that nature within a half mile, because they are not a MBTA rapid transit community. They are an adjacent community.
And that says that in the law that was passed by legislation, those three paragraphs?
I believe it's in the guidelines, yes.
It actually says where applicable.
Okay. So guidelines are our law that we're using here tonight? The state guidelines? Or are we using the law that was passed? We're talking about law, guidelines, and opinions.
And Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The statute that was passed by the legislature calls upon the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to adopt guidelines. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has adopted guidelines. We are required to comply with those guidelines absent a ruling from a court stating that they are not applicable.
Okay. So if the court rules that the guidelines are not part of the law, then we are doing this a little in advance of that decision. Is that reasonable? Guidelines were not done by the state, I think you called the court, Mr. Simon Cataldo, and they passed that in 2020.
Is that a question?
It's a question. I'm confused about guidelines done by something other than the state legislature, state court.
The guidelines were adopted by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as was instructed in the statute passed by the General Court.
Okay. So the guidelines are the state law that we're, we still don't have the warrant article up, Mr. Moderator. That'd be helpful to see.
Mr. Latina, do you want them to put up the warrant article?
I'd like it, because I haven't seen it yet tonight, Mr. Moderator.
You haven't seen it tonight?
I haven't seen the warrant article itself that we're voting on, on Number 26 or 27. And we've had both folks showing really nice presentations, but I haven't seen the warrant article itself that we're voting on. It's kind of like the law. You have to look at that first. Also, my other question is, the UMass, so-called UMass campus, 521 units. We were told by the Planning Board very recently that we have to amend what Town Meeting passed, which was a senior housing area, so there weren't any kids. We have to amend it to have children allowed to be in that facility, whatever they're building today. Is that correct?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. That is not correct. The zoning that was passed by Town Meeting with regard to the West Campus did not have an age restriction. It did not have the limitation on the number of units, and it did not have the affordability requirement. All of those provisions were in a separate development agreement between the developer and the town through its Select Board.
And those stand with this MBTA law or guidelines that we're passing tonight?
So, again, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has reached out, has indicated some concern with regard to the existence of those development agreements, and have indicated that there may be necessary for provisions of those agreements to be either stricken or modified. The town has had meetings with the developer, and the developer has provided a letter agreement indicating their willingness to make those changes as necessary.
Okay. And do we have any idea, I guess Finance Committee question, any idea of the finance cost of those amendments that we're not seeing in what we're trying to pass tonight? What would the amendments cost the town in terms of number of children or cost to infrastructure? Do we have any idea?
At the risk of providing extraordinary speculation, what you're asking is if there is going to be a cost of adopting this law. And what has been presented by the Planning Board on Article 26 is that we are adopting the zoning that allows the building to occur, but the places that have been selected will not afford the opportunity to build. And by doing that, there will be no cost.
So zero cost. Thank you. And one more question for presenter, standing there. There were 177 communities on the little map. In 2022, NIMCOG presented to the Planning Board and the town on another presentation, 52 locations on a map. I'm wondering how that transferred. And secondarily, the question I have is, is Chelmsford the only one that has paper-only compliance? Out of 177 locations that must comply to this law or lose funding and get sued by the Attorney General and the governor, I guess the governor sues, how many of those 177 communities besides Chelmsford has a paper-only compliance? Are we the only ones that are smart enough to do that?
So I am not aware of what the other, a lot of the other communities are doing. There are 177 of them, all taking various approaches to this. Kelly Lineman might be able to address that.
Could we hear?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Kelly Linema, Deputy Director of the Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments. To address your first comment, I am not aware of a presentation where we shared 52 or 55 communities. To my knowledge, it has always been at least 175 communities that are subject to the law, and then later with the revision of the guidelines, that increased to 177 communities. I also know that to date, as of this morning, 44 communities have passed this law. However, I have not looked individually at every single one of those 44 communities to understand whether they are paper compliance or not. What I do know, as the regional planning agency that has worked with seven of our communities on this, there are a range of approaches. Some communities have adopted an approach where they want to seek the maximum benefit to town as far as economic development, and so they are looking at encouraging development in order to provide that new growth funding for the town. Other communities are trying to seek a balance, and that balance is in an attempt to sort of look at what is, what can they provide as far as short, medium, and long-term development opportunities. And other communities may be doing more of what Chelmsford is.
Thank you. So we don't have an answer for whether Chelmsford is the one out of 177 that have a paper-only, "nobody will build in our town" compliance. That's what I'm hearing. You can start the clock, Mr. Moderator. The answer is the legislation that was done was done during COVID. I don't know if anybody remembers 2020. That's when the state legislature shut down the State House for more than two years. Massachusetts State House was closed down for longer than any other state house in the country. In fact, the legislation was being worked on behind the scenes, maybe from home and on Zoom, by the state legislature with no face-to-face contact with any of the public. You weren't allowed to. You had to wear a mask, and you could not go into the State House. When it was signed into law, just before it was signed, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Chair at that point, representing all but two towns and cities in Massachusetts, begged the governor to veto it on January 7th of 2021, nine months into COVID, folks, nine months, 13 months before you were allowed to walk into the State House to talk to your representative and say, "What the heck?" In 101 pages, you've got three paragraphs that says every community, well, not all, the western part of the state's not covered, and Boston is not covered. We invented this thing, MBTA, and we said it had to have a station or a dock for the ferry station. Station is a big word. Station means you have to have buses and terminals. That's kind of a Lowell thing. That's a Boston thing. What they've done now is said, "We forced 177 communities to pick 10% of your community." We have 15,000 locations that have housing in it. Pick 10% more. 20% controlled by the state now with the 40B projects that we have in town. Those were real popular. Those generated a lot of housing. If you go by the one on Turnpike Road, 20 cars have New Hampshire plates on them. They don't get any excise tax here in Chelmsford for those folks. Nobody cares. That's $20,000 a year that we lose that you pay instead of us.
One minute.
This is one more time where the state, behind the scenes, during COVID, nine months into it, passed legislation that MMA said, "Please veto." Republican Governor Baker, he signed it on January 7th, when you couldn't visit your state legislators. Very recently, our town politicals went down to the State House, because the next one on the docket in July is to add a second house to your single-family homes all across the state. If you don't say no to this, you're going to be allowed to build a duplex on every single single-family housing zone in the state.
I'm sorry, Mr. Latina.
Thank you very much. I'm in debate, Mr. Moderator. If you'd like to debate, you can stand behind us.
No, no. You know, your disrespect is really beneath you. Go ahead.
Good evening again. Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. A few things. One, I checked with the town treasurer to see how much state housing project funding we got from 2018 to the present. That's the six years that I was referring to. Now, from the state website, all I could find was $930,000. The town treasurer informed me that we actually received $1,009,000. It's essentially in the same ballpark. But exchanging that over six years for $1.6 million per year to $31 million per year does not make any sense whatsoever, and therefore we should vote no on this. Now, a previous speaker implied that by not voting yes on 26, that somehow that disparages the Planning Board. Well, there's no disparaging the Planning Board. This is the Planning Board's idea of what should be done. They worked very hard on it. I recognize it, and I applaud their effort. However, this is about what is the best option for the town. The law, the MBTA statute has three paragraphs. A says, "Thou shalt do this." B says, "Well, if you don't do this, you're going to lose your state housing project funding," which a million dollars over six years is pittance, right? And then C, "Four state agencies will take over zoning." So if you look just at the statute, those three paragraphs, the best option is B, the opt-out clause, and not receiving $1 million in six years. We retain our zoning rights. The state does not usurp it and does not supersede the town. Now, as far as, "This is only about zoning. Nothing's going to be built," yada, yada, yada. Well, if the state says this is being done because of a housing crisis and is only requiring zoning but no building, that does not solve the state's presumed housing crisis, which is incorrect in the first place, because people leave in the state in droves. Okay. One second. I just got notes all over the place here.
Yeah, and you only have six seconds left.
Okay. So this is about the rule of law, not the rule of the state. Vote no. Thank you.
You can stop the clock. Okay, first, I'd like to say, I agree with we need housing for our children. This is not the housing we need for our children. This is going to be high-end housing. They're not going to be able to afford it anyway. Second, this is not going to be housing for the elderly, because it's not age-restricted. This is going to be housing for family with childrens, two, three, four-bedroom housing, not one-bedrooms. So again, it's not going to be for our kids when they start out either, because when you start out as a kid, you're starting out in a one-bedroom apartment, or one-bedroom house, or condo that's feasible and affordable. These are not going to be affordable. They're not going to be one-bedroom. And again, I cannot see it being zoned and not built. I don't believe that the state is going to accept this proposal, because I don't believe that they just want us to just zone it. They want it built. If they're calling for a housing crisis and we need housing, they want it built. They don't want it just zoned. And for a perspective reminder, in 2019, presentations for a special town meeting in February centered on a devastating compromise of the town's fiscal spilly if town reps approved a police sergeants' union arbitration award. The arbitration...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Now you're talking about litigation that is not part of the warrant article. You cannot do that.
I'm not...
You're talking about litigation.
Right, exactly.
No, 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 no. You cannot talk about litigation.
Freedom of speech, First Amendment. I can say what I want.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
First Amendment. I can say what I want. Yes, I can.
No, you're a town...
Calling the state.
Call the state. Call the state. I've made it very clear. Every time I speak at the beginning of town meeting, I say, "Unless litigation is part of the article in which we are dealing, you cannot talk about litigation." So go on to your next point.
My point is, this is not fiscally responsible for the town. We are setting the town up to get, the taxes, your taxes, everybody's going to be moving on a Chelmsford soon, because your taxes are going to skyrocket, because we cannot afford this. This is not affordable. It's fiscally wrong. It's fiscally bad. It's giving away our constitutional rights, and I'm not being able to support, I'm not even being able to do my constitutional rights. They're taking away my constitutional rights. They won't even let me speak. The First Amendment. I can't even speak. That's wrong. I'm sorry. I don't care what anybody in here says. I am being gagged, just like President Trump's being gagged.
Okay, that was also inappropriate. Look, 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 folks, folks. I make some rules. These are rules that we are bound to abide by, and one of which is, you do not discuss litigation unless that is the subject of the warrant article. I'm not trying to stifle anybody's First Amendment rights, but we all agree to follow the rules in town meeting. If we don't follow the rules in town meeting, then we are not going to be an appropriate legislative body, which is what we are and always have been. Go ahead.
Let's all take a breath.
Let's all take a breath. Claire Gnaut, Precinct 4, newly appointed to town meeting. So if I ask a question that I should know, it's because I didn't think I had to pay a lot of attention to this article until about two weeks ago. But here I am, and I like to do my due diligence. So I have one question and then some thoughts to share with the body. My question is about the state review letter March 18th to the town, the pre-adoption review from EOHLC. And it seems like it's been presented here tonight that it's a bunch of sort of technicalities that we're going to be able to deal with no problem, and then the questions surrounding the development agreement. And then you present a timeline on if this is approved tonight, what the next steps are. And what I see, I guess, I'm confused because we're saying amending the development agreement is very low risk. And I'd like to understand how that is because it seems the state wants us to hit certain numbers that the development agreement possibly can't change for. Am I missing something?
So the...
You know, in terms of the 15 per acre and, I mean, is it... That's where I'm stuck.
So the development agreement that was entered into by the town and the developer limits the capacity...
This is the West Campus site?
Yes, the UMass West Campus only. Limits the capacity of that property to 12, 13, thank you. 13 units per acre. That is below the minimum required density of the zoning overlay that we have to put in.
Of 15?
Yes. So that would essentially negate the zoning overlay numbers. And that would leave us short in however many units we would need to model for that area. So we would either have to...
Short by like 70-something units, okay.
So the planning board had a couple different options. We could take that property out of the overlay and select different areas to use.
Need the requirement, yeah.
Or remove the developers, the development agreement requirements of the age restriction, the numbers of units, the density, and then the affordability requirement. Those three areas are the areas that are in contradiction to the overlay that we're trying to pass. So by removing those restrictions from the development agreement, the overlay would be able to do its work on that property.
So we have something that's got foundations in the ground, and we think we can change it from 13 to 15?
No, so...
Don't have to.
If this were...
Just have to have the overlay.
If this property...
Take it out of the black and white.
So if this property were not yet developed...
There's a lot of ether in this plan.
If the property were not yet developed, if the planning had not happened yet, and we remove those restrictions, the developer would likely be able to add those units.
Okay.
But because the permits have been pulled, the designs have been finalized, the wastewater treatment plant...
Understood, okay.
Because of all of that, it is extremely unlikely that they would undo all of that work that they have already done and sunk money into, pull out the foundations and redesign.
I get it, okay. So they're likely, so the state's saying, "Well, if the developer chose not to develop it to the maximum, that's okay?"
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The letter from the state for the pre-whatever review, how strong of a guarantee is it that the Attorney General will then accept it the way it's written?
So there are two...
Like, who did...
So there are two distinct approvals that we have to follow with this. As part of the MBTA zoning, the Office of Housing and Livable Communities decided to have a pre-approval review process. So that way, when towns create the zoning, they don't create the zoning, get it approved, and then find out that it's not compliant. That would be a lot of wasted time and effort on the town. So what they did is they said, "If you submit your plans ahead of time, we can take a look at them, let you know what areas we have concerns with, and then you can adjust those before the town meeting vote." So that's what they did. They reviewed our overlays, they reviewed our bylaws, and beyond the developer agreement, they only found those four minor issues with our plan. So we corrected those, we're bringing it to town meeting. They then have the final review after we submit everything in December. However, there is a state Attorney General review of any bylaw that we pass at town meeting immediately after we pass it. So after we pass this zoning bylaw, the state Attorney General will review it for legality to make sure that it's not in conflict with any other bylaws that we have, and they pass the bylaw based on that. And then in the fall, when we, after we amend the development agreement and we gather all of our packet together, we submit that to the Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and then they do their final review on whether or not it's compliant with the MBTA zoning.
So I thank you for your answer. Their review is like sort of administrative support coming from EOHLC or whatever to sort of say, "It ticks all the boxes on my checklist," as opposed to, "Here's a map of Chelmsford zoning, and boy, it looks like you've picked..." Or do they really look at our map?
They looked at everything. They looked at where we were placing these.
Okay.
And that's why they found the development agreement as part of the UMass property.
Okay, so the other part of my question is, what... Is there any additional information we would gain if we waited until October town meeting to take this up that would make any people with question in the room feel more solid?
I can't predict the future. However, my feeling is that we would have no additional information on any of the lawsuits because those aren't being heard until October and likely not decided until who knows when and potentially after our deadline. We also have the risk of other towns submitting their plans, and because there are additional deadlines and additional towns submitting for those pre-approval reviews, we do run the risk of the state seeing trends with other towns and deciding to cut those off at the pass and coming back to us with changes that we have to put in place before the deadline.
All right, thank you. You can stop the clock. I want to thank, this is repetitive but quick, the planning board, the board, the select board and the town staff that have worked on this quandary. It's a quandary, for sure. I feel a lot of compassion for Doreen Deschler and want to thank her for all the work she's done to bring her concerns to this body. Personally, I've had a conversation with her where it's not important to her, so I will not be making a motion that we vote on her article before this article. But I was, I found it, and I understand the logic of the moderator in saying a vote for one is a vote against the other, and that's logic. But I think any citizen that brings a petition to town meeting deserves to have a vote on their article. She is okay going the way it's going, but I just wanted that in the record. We need housing in this state. And we don't need it out in the middle of the state. We need it where their jobs and education is. And I stood up when we did the article for the housing at UMass West Campus because I thought it was the best and highest use for that property versus anything else we needed that the town might have needed it for at the time. And I'm standing up here now saying, while I say thank you to the planning board, I know there are things coming down the pike. And I moved to Chelmsford because I felt like we weren't a snob zoning kind of community. And I certainly hope that when you all think about the need for housing or how people can afford to stay in their homes and whether or not it has to be family-restricted if they have an accessory unit and all of those things that you think a little more broadly than what other people might call NIMBY and snob zoning. That's not the town I want to live in. As a senior citizen, I am sitting there in a four-bedroom home with no children in it because I can't find housing I want to live in at a reasonable price for what I have, what I'd be paying. You know, I'm paying to go down in half the size and only saving a couple hundred grand. Not worth it, you know? And I'd be more than happy to get a family in my home. Can't do it right now. This town has to find a way. It's the youth that provide vibrancy and growth in future, and we have to have them. So I hope that as the planning board continues to assess housing things, that they factor all that in. Not everybody feels like not in my backyard, I don't. I'm voting for this because I think you've done the best job you can with a pile of poop, and I hope everybody else does.
Thank you.
About the Duplex in Precinct 11. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter of Article 26. I had a quick clarification on the second slide of this article, the next one, which is 141, 195, 168, subsection C, item 1B, which says Article 14, Aquafor Protection District. It says prior to that that it stands deprecated or not enforced. Could you comment on item 2, or point 2B, Article 8, Environmental Protection Standards? Is the environmental protection standards, does it supersede the Aquafor Protection District in many cases? Or is there no consideration given to the fact that we could be poisoning the Aquafor District, protecting some other standards of environment? So I just wanted to talk.
This was one of the discussions we had at the planning board as well. None of us were extremely happy that we had to take the Aquafor Protection District special permit out of this overlay. However, when we dug deep into it, we realized that because of the areas that these are in, they're pretty standard areas of Chelmsford, not at high risk for the aquifers. Most of the reviews that we would be doing would be covered under the site plan and the stormwater protection, which are allowed reviews under the MBTA zoning.
Okay, so you're still able to do some form of oversight into making sure that water quality is maintained to the extent that it can be maintained within the zone that you have?
Because they're in areas that are not highly sensitive. If we were to select areas that were a little bit more sensitive, some of the other areas that we were looking at, that would have been a problem. But because of the areas that we're selecting, it's not as much of a problem because those areas are covered under the site plan review and the stormwater review.
Next question is, is it a stated planning board strategy to look at the other areas with a viewpoint to create zoning overlays or underlying regulations such that a future development, when it comes in, when we manage the growth, will have to, will marry the concepts of the MBTAs in the spirit of the law, the intent and purpose of the law to maintaining environmental standards? Is that a plan of record or stated strategy of planning?
Yes, absolutely. It's something we discussed as a planning board. There are some areas that we thought some of the spirit of the MBTA zoning would apply. I gave an example before of the Alpine Road area. But we wanted more control over that zoning. So we did decide as a planning board to look at those areas in the future, create, potentially create other overlays that we had control of. And the Aquafor Protection is a perfect example of something we would keep in that overlay in the future that we couldn't do with this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. May I start the clock? While the, this choice of zoning specificity or what the law is intending to do may not be something that Chelmsford likes, we do live in a Commonwealth, and it's Commonwealth, it's not my wealth. So it's about everybody sharing the burden in this state to make sure that the intent and purpose is solved for. And this is a long-term trend. We need people, resource efficiency to come in. And I think this housing and the concomitant implication on land use and transportation and water usage efficiencies, all of them go hand-in-hand in a long-term trend. So I think this is a great article. The planning board has done one of the best things is to buy time before a catastrophe. In state legislative process, two years is taking 10 deep breaths. So vote for this, let the planning board, execute the planning board strategy that's defined, and let's move forward to getting a more efficient town that builds on health and builds on resource efficiency because we can't just think about the fact that we have plenty of water just because we have lots of rain right now. That doesn't work all the time. In 20 years, that might change, and we may say, "Wish we had more efficiency." And we are building a new school, are hoping to build a new school. So let's build it just in time with more kids possibly coming in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Adam Brando, I'm Precinct 6. Been a resident of the town for 15-plus years and town meeting rep for four-plus now already. So please start the clock, I have no questions. Just, everybody else has explained. I really appreciate that the town in Chelmsford does a great job at providing information to the town meeting reps. If you were walking into this evening blind to this conversation, you haven't done your job as a town meeting rep. The planning board, the finance board, everybody else has served us information to make a better decision on tonight's question that we have. So everybody should be educated before walking into the room tonight. I've heard lots of informations for and against. And of course, you know, I have my own premonitions on where we should move, and I think we should move to question.
You can't move the question when you make a statement before moving the question. So as much as I would like for you to be able to do that, and I know you're a new town meeting rep, the rule is you get up, you move the question, and you don't thank everybody or make other comments. And I'm sorry that that's the rule, but...
I blew it. I told you I was going to move the question, I told you I was going to move the question. Told you I was going to move the question. Please let me move the question. I hope somebody's going to move the question. That's it.
I'm sorry?
I don't have another opportunity to move the question.
Well, if you get back in line.
I'll get back in line.
I'm sorry.
Matthew Castle, Precinct 6. You can start the clock. So really, we've spent a lot of time talking about this and making it seem a lot more complicated than it is. This is a very open-and-shut case of if we, as this town, are going to comply with state law or not, and if we like this way, the planning board has told us that we should approach complying with the state law. A vote against this either says, as a previous speaker said, that we don't agree with the method that the planning board is bringing us in compliance with state law, or that you want to drag us into a fight with the state in court. That's all I have, thank you.
So you don't want to tell us how you're going to vote? Which one? Thank you.
Chris Bowman, Precinct 10. I'll be very quick. As far as the intervenor defendant, that lawsuit has been incorporated into the SJC docket. One. Number two, a previous speaker mentioned that reasonable pricing would be beneficial. While that is the primary issue in the 2022 and 2023 reports, is that there's plenty of housing. The issue is really pricing because people... because people just can't afford it. And just by looking at the 40Bs, federal and state, each one that's built, the full rate aspect with the state is 80%. Keeps on going up and up and up and up. So, there's no reason to believe that any housing built under the MBTA, which is all full rate, per the statute, and the state guidelines say, well, you could have a maximum of 10% affordable, but that full rate price is going to keep on going up and up and up. Thank you. And vote no on 26. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Diggs, Precinct 2. I'd like to get a clarification from Ms. Illevalli on one of his slides. The slide was 171. It was pre-adoption review from EO HLC. Second part of that, next slide. Particularly, I wanted to ask a question about age restriction. And this referred to, this slide prefer, was directly to the West Campus, I believe.
Yep.
Multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions. The only part is, I remember that the town voted for this project on the West Campus. One of the things that put it over the top was the fact that there were 54 units of age-restricted housing in town. Age-restricted housing in town, the last time there was any before this was a long, long, long time ago. And is it possible that the West Campus team could alter that and say, I know it's part of Chase, of David Hetterson's group, Choice, but could that be waived? I know they're supposed to be one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms, but could the wage, age restriction be removed from that if this passes?
So, I would ask town council to just weigh in after I give my answer, but I believe that the, both the developer, Tremel Crowe and David Hetterson have committed to continuing with their current plans unchanged if this development agreement were to be amended.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. That is correct, as it relates to the commitment of Choice. Theoretically, if Choice at some point decided to back out and a different affordable housing developer came in to complete the affordability on that portion of the project, if the development agreement is amended to eliminate the age restriction, then they, they could in fact move forward with an affordable development that doesn't include an age restriction. I think, given the fact that the Chelmsford Housing Authority's Choice program is the developer that is going to be doing that, we can move forward with a pretty good level of confidence that they are going to live up to their commitment and develop this as an age-restricted affordable unit.
Does that mean that if, that as part of passing this agreement in Chelmsford and trying to eliminate these negatives, these three points of negatives that the town says, okay, and, and works with the developer, and he says, okay, to, to, to allow the town to go forward with its plan, overall plan, that we would eliminate the age restriction? Is that possible?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Could, can you clarify your question?
If, if, a, a part of the larger plan, the total plan is that this goes forward, and the state barks with these three, three remaining issues, that the town, working with David Hetterson and so forth, agrees that for the greater good, they would abandon the age restriction. Is-
So, so that is what is currently proposed when we're talking about modifying the development agreement. That does not mean that Choice is going to abandon moving forward as an age-restricted development. It just means that the development agreement would be modified to eliminate that provision. But it doesn't mean that they're not going to move forward and develop it as originally proposed. This is really, it's just a paper exercise to eliminate that provision from the development agreement. The zoning bylaw doesn't include an age restriction, because we're not allowed to have an age restriction in the bylaw and be MBTA zoning compliant. But it doesn't prevent any developer from moving forward on a project that includes an age restriction. That is a developer's choice.
Okay, I'm still confused about it. Sorry. It's, it's the developer's choice?
Correct. So, so the, we're not allowed to have a zoning bylaw for the MBTA Zoning Communities Act that includes an age restriction. The development agreement that was previously put in place has a provision that requires an age restr, an age restriction. We're going to have to modify that development agreement to eliminate that provision. So, that would allow a development to move forward without an age restriction. However, we do have a developer that's already in front of the town, that is an entity of the town, that is looking to move forward with an age-restricted development. There's nothing in the, in the MBTA community zoning requirements, there's nothing in our zoning bylaw that would prohibit, at their own choice, a developer from moving forward with an age restriction on a development.
Because it is, it's presently existing?
Even if it hadn't presently existed. Say, say, we were, we were doing a zoning bylaw overlay in an area that there's literally nothing there currently. It's completely undeveloped. And a developer comes in and says, listen, what I really want to do is an age-restricted housing development here. They can do that. That's their option. The town can't require them to do it, but they have the option of choosing it themselves. And that's essentially what the, the Choice Development has been all along. They, they came in and proposed doing an age-restriction component to that development. It wasn't something that the town imposed on them, but then when we did the development agreement, we added it to it, because it made sense to have it in the, in the agreement. But the proposal was always for it to be age-restricted.
Well, using your argument, if a developer came in and found space within the boundaries as laid out in the town's proposal, they could not build age-restricted housing in that area?
No, incorrect.
That's correct?
That's not correct. A developer is allowed to come in and propose an age-restricted housing development. The town simply is not allowed to require them to do an age-restricted development. It's always the developer's option to move forward with an age restriction if that's what they want.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Jim Clancy, Precinct 2. I'd like to move the question.
All right. We have a motion to move the question. The article, the motion passes. Now, we will be voting on Article 26, keeping in mind that whatever you vote on Article 26, Article 27 is going to be the opposite, okay? Because Article pass, Article 26 passes, 125 to 19 with two abstentions. Article 27 fails with 19 yes votes, 125 no votes, and two abstentions. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
No.
All in favor?
No.
See you in the fall.